Good evening, everyone. My name is Anthony Torreiros and I am Chair of the Planning Commission. Welcome to this Planning Commission meeting. The purpose of this Planning Commission study session is to briefly review the 2025 to 2027 proposed biennial capital budget and 2026 to 2030 capital improvement program. Members of the public are welcome to attend. We will get things started with roll call. Vice Chair Cantrell.
Here.
Commissioner Barocia.
Here.
Commissioner Bendel. Commissioner Bigford. Commissioner Lardinois. Commissioner Oliverio.
Here.
Commissioner Rosario. Commissioner Young.
Here.
Myself here. That's five in attendance, so we do not yet have quorum. We will go ahead and get started with the staff presentation, and then we will hopefully have quorum by the time that we go to vote on this item. And it looks like we have Commissioner Lardinois starting or arriving now, so that gives us quorum. Okay, before we move into the staff recommendation, we will open the floor to public comment for non-agendized items. If anyone in attendance this evening would like to provide public comment for anything not on tonight's agenda, feel free to come forward at this time. And you'll have two minutes. If you could just state your name for... Perfect. Thank you.
Yes, my name is Lilian. I'm a substitute teacher. And I'm here because I'm interested in how the Planning Commission and the people that sit on the commission will go forward with your envisioned plan. This is not on your agendas items today, so I'm just going to throw it out there. So, planning on land use, number one, sustainability. We talk about climate and carbon neutrality in our city. You know, when I'm in a classroom with kids, we talk about tree canopy. We talk about climate. We talk about the environment. This is all very important to the city of San Jose, especially since we're considered Tree City USA. There was a lady that used to work here. Her name was Carrie Romanoff. She was your first sustainability officer. And she, I think, had the first what's called green bond design build. So I'm interested in knowing if the Planning Commission is going to be maintaining green building and sticking to the green building ordinance. There is such an ordinance in your city, I believe. But really, I'm here today because I have looked at previous planning commissions, and I have noticed an uptick in developers uprooting trees. And I'm wearing green today because I like trees. I don't know about you guys. I don't think it's that far-fetched of an idea to understand that if we maintain our trees, it has a real effect on our climate and carbon neutrality. So, when I saw recently, this is maybe a week ago in one of your planning sessions, there was a draft, and I looked at it, and there was 352 trees going to be removed, ordinance and non-ordinance trees. I was sick to my stomach. I'm like, this just can't keep going on. And then I noticed once again, another uptick and two more developers coming in. And all of a sudden, the city, you, your commission, commission is stating that we are not going to allow this to continue, and we will not suggest to city council that, in fact, they develop and uproot those trees. However, that doesn't mean that these things can't come back on your agenda. So, how do you plan to reduce environmental impacts? And if you get elected, although, you know, if the, if, if the city planning commission continues to uproot trees at the rate they're doing, I would be interested in knowing how, if you sit on city council, Mr. Torreiros, that you will, in fact, keep Tree City USA as it is and keep our tree canopy and not consistently allow developers to uproot hundreds of trees. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. I think the only thing that I will add here is that there is an existing tree removal policy in terms of the number of replacement trees required onsite, as well as an in-lu fee option. So that is the current rubric by which we judge proposals that come before this commission. But thank you for your comment. Are there any other members of the public in attendance who would like to provide comment on non-agendized items tonight? Okay, I'm not seeing anyone move forward. So with that, we will move on to item 3A, which is the city's 2025 to 2027 proposed biennial capital budget and 2026 to 2030 capital improvements program. Staff, do we have a presentation?
Yes, good evening Chair and members of the Planning Commission. Jennifer Tell, Capital Coordinator in the City Manager's Budget Office. I will provide an overview of the proposed budget and the funding sources for the five-year capital improvement program. Then I will turn it over to Public Works Deputy Director Sal Kumar to discuss some of the program highlights. This capital budget is the culmination of the work of staff who are joined here with us this evening from the airport, environmental services, fire, library, parks, recreation, and neighborhood services, police, public works, and transportation departments. We want to acknowledge that their diligent efforts prioritizing the city's capital needs and balancing them with the available resources as presented in this proposed five-year capital improvement program, or CIP. And at the end of the presentation, we are available for your questions. Next slide. Oh, next slide, please. Thank you. There are 14 capital programs that fall under the city service areas. We will review program highlights in each of these six city service areas, or CSAs. Next slide, please. Next year's proposed budget reflects a $5.3 billion recommended spending plan across 145 different funds. This presentation is focusing on the 18% or $1.2 billion slice of the budget pie that is made up of the capital funds. Next slide, please. Here is a historical comparison of the five-year CIP over the last 10 years. For fiscal years '26 to '30, the CIP totals $3.4 billion. While smaller than last year's CIP, once funds to complete existing projects in the various capital programs are rebudgeted from '24, '25 to '25, '26 as part of the adopted budget process, the total amount of funding in the '25 to '26 capital budget and '26 to 2030 CIP is expected to increase. The fiscal years '20 to '24 and '25 to '29 CIPs were the largest to date. A large contributor to these CIPs was the Measure T Disaster Preparedness, Public Safety, and Infrastructure Bond passed by voters in November 2018. This measure authorized the city to issue up to $650 million in general obligation bonds for investments in emergency and disaster response facilities and infrastructure such as roads and flood and water quality protection. In this proposed CIP, we see exhaustion of Measure T funds anticipated in fiscal year 2028 to 2029. Next slide. Of the $3.4 billion in the total five-year CIP, $1.2 billion is budgeted in '25, '26, and $676 million is budgeted in '26, '27. The second year of the proposed biennial capital budget is substantially lower than the first year, and this is typical due to our process of carrying forward or rebudgeting unspent appropriations for multi-year capital budgets. The first year of the capital budget includes some of these estimated carryovers. And I want to note that new this year is presentation of a biennial capital budget. Previously, we brought forward annual allocations, but this year, we are presenting the first two years of the five-year spending plan. So we will continue to bring forward annual updates, or a mid-biennial update, that includes that fifth year of the CIP. And this will just allow staff to focus more on the long-term planning nature of the capital projects. So we will not produce the large, complex budget document each year, but we will continue to present to you on that five-year CIP. Next slide, please. Here is a breakdown of the funding source categories for the $3.4 billion site CIP. We'll go into more detail for the top five categories listed here. Next slide, please. Financing proceeds is the largest source of funds in the capital improvement program, providing almost $864 million, down slightly from $880 million in the CIP adopted last year. Similar to the last CIP, the largest use of financing proceeds, is in the Water Pollution Control Capital Program, with $320 million of wastewater revenue notes and bomb proceeds for the implementation of capital projects identified in the plant master plan. New in the CIP is the use of $69 million in sanitary sewer revenue notes to support capacity improvement projects. Next slide, please. The next largest funding source is contributions, loans, and transfers between funds. The largest transfers are from the Sewer Service and Use Charge Fund to the Water Pollution Control and Sanitary Sewer Capital Programs. Fees paid by the users of the sanitary sewer system are used for capital projects in these programs, as well as operating costs. The proposed CIP includes approximately $53 million in contributions from the general fund, with the largest allocations for fire apparatus replacement and replacement of the 911 dispatch backup generator. The amount of general fund contributions in the proposed CIP is substantially lower than the last adopted CIP because we do not carry forward existing general fund appropriations for capital projects in the proposed CIP. As part of the year-end cleanup process, the amount of general fund contributions will likely increase. Next slide, please. Revenue from other agencies represents approximately $644 million of funding, down 19% from $795 million in the last adopted CIP. The decrease is largely attributable to a decrease in FAA grants that is significantly influenced by the deferral of the terminal's A and B ramp rehabilitation projects until airport passenger activity recovers. For reference, federal grant funding is primarily received by the Traffic Capital Program, with $92 million in the proposed CIP, and the Airport Capital Program with $32 million. The decrease in federal funding in the proposed CIP does not yet reflect the ongoing uncertainty around federal grants. Staff is actively monitoring the status of federal grants for capital projects. As we know more, we will return to city council to adjust and reprioritize capital funding as necessary. Next slide, please. Taxes, fees, and charges funding is up slightly from $561 million to $572. Airport passenger facility charges are estimated to be down by $25 million to $111 million. However, construction and conveyance tax is estimated to be up by $27 million to $267 million compared to the last adopted CIP. Next slide. The beginning fund balance is made up of money carried over from prior year allocations. There are plans for most of this money to ensure that existing projects are continued and to be spent pending the determination of a final scope for projects, final project locations, and/or availability of future funding. This amount will increase as part of the year-end cleanup process when capital appropriations not spent this year return to fund balance. Still, compared to last year's proposed CIP, which did not include carried over dollars, the amount of beginning fund balance in this proposed CIP is down 23% from $613 million last year. The decrease is largely due to the exhaustion of Measure T funds in 2028, 29. Next slide, please. Those were the main funding sources for the capital program, and now we will talk about the expenditures or use of funds. This chart shows where the $3.4 billion of investments will be made. The Water Pollution Control and Traffic Capital Programs each make up approximately a quarter of the CIP, followed by the airport at almost 15%, and parks and community facilities at about 12%. And now I will turn it over to Public Works Deputy Director Sal Kumar to discuss program highlights.
Thank you, Jennifer. Next slide, please. So, good evening, good evening Chair and Planning Commission members. My name is Sal Kumar, Deputy Director of Public Works, and I'll be touching on each of the programs within the CSAs. So I have about 17 slides to go through. So this slide over here shows city's capital program development and how it aligns with the goals of the city's 2040 general plan. Can you, sorry about that. Alright, thanks. Master plan, as well as city staff and public, public working together in development of the CIP. It's a team effort, and I would like to take the time to recognize and thank all the partner departments that we in Public Works work closely with to deliver these projects in the capital program. Next slide, please. As Jennifer mentioned, in November 2018, San Jose voters approved the Measure T bond measure, which provided up to $650 million of general obligation bonds for a variety of projects, such as street repairs, public safety, flood prevention, LED lighting, and community emergency centers. As you see from the list on the screen here, we have a lot of projects that we're currently working on. Some are in design, some are in construction. So the five-year budget for this program is about $800 million. The next two years, we are looking at completing about, about next year, we're looking at $134 million, and then the following year, $42 million of projects, so. Next slide, please. So, the, the goal of this program right here is developer system program, which is to underground existing utilities. Projects are developed, working closely with the utility companies, such as PG&E, AT&amp;T, and Comcast. Please note, the Route 28 utility company projects are funded by utility companies. The Route 20B, which is a designation 2820B, is developer in-lu fee collected by city and prioritized based on level of fees collected. These projects in the CIP include multiple Route 20 and 20B projects. And as you see on the list, there are a few projects that are under design and soon to be in construction. And there's one project, Pearl and Hillstella, to be legislated pretty soon, so. Next slide, please. Sanitary sewer systems, so the next two slides, I'll be talking about the city's two collection systems, their sanitary and storm systems. They are two separate systems. Sanitary system consists of over 2,000 miles of sewer mains, and as well as, what, they cover three other jurisdictions, and also conveys the sewers to the San Jose, Santa Clara Regional Wastewater Facility. The program priorities, as you see on the list of the projects listed there, the program priorities include, as we can see, is support goal of preventing sewer overflows, manage system capacity and system conditions, improve sewer and repair existing sewer systems. Next slide, please. The storm sewer system is as small of the two, which is the five-year CIP is about $68 million. The storm sewer system consists of roughly 1100 miles of storm sewer mains and about 31 storm pump stations. This is a separate system for, from the sanitary sewer system that collects storm and eventually conveyed the water into two major waterways, which is Guadalajara River and Coyote Creek. The key focus of the CIP over the next few years will be to deliver trash capture devices, so we capture the trash before it gets discharged into the storm water, I mean, those storm creeks. The Measure T funded projects addressing drainage and flooding issues, which is the Chaco Storm Drain Project. Other ones we are looking at, we're doing is implementing regional green stormwater and infrastructure projects to capture, filter, and treat storm water before it's discharged into local waterways. Next slide, please. Water pollution, water pollution control. The San Jose, Santa Clara Regional Wastewater Facility, known as RWF, is a wastewater treatment facility serving eight subway cities and four special districts. This development of CIP is guided by Plant Master Plan, known as PMP. It's about $2 billion, over 30 years of planning to implement more than 114 CIPs. It's one of the largest capital improvement programs in San Jose. As you can see from the list of the projects, the focus is on revaluation of wastewater treatment facilities, upgrading register, and plant security system upgrades. Next slide, please. The water utility system, the San Jose Municipal Water System provides water service to approximately 2,600,000 customers in San Jose. The service five service areas in San Jose, there are Alviso, North San Jose, Coyote Valley, Eden Vale, and Evergreen. A key focus for CIP include construction of new facilities, maintenance of existing infrastructure, improvements to the water utility system. One of the key projects in the CIP include the wastewater admin building that's continuing construction, and we are hoping to open by late summer this year, so. Next slide, please. Library. The library capital program objective is to provide accessible, quality...
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
As you go further. Do we have a CIP history that shows the delta between the proposed and adopted? To give us a sense of how close we generally are? Is that possible to discuss that?
Yeah, I will work on it.
You will? Okay, thank you.
So again, so libraries, so yeah, the, the main goal is to provide accessible quality library services to residents of San Jose. The CIP provides funding to acquire physical and electronic materials, install automation equipment and systems, and support facility repairs and improvements. Some of the work are funded by the building for library infrastructure grant, includes building repairs, ongoing maintenance, repairs to boilers, chillers, HVAC system, and floor replacement repairs. Next slide, please. Parks and Community Facilities. The Parks and Community Facilities program is managed by Parks, Rec, Neighborhood Services Department that provides oversight of the planning and development of parks and open space, community centers, as well as public accessible trails. The proposed CIP focuses on efforts to maintain improving park facilities, such as a few named here, our Spartan Keys Area Park Development, All-Inclusive Park Playground, Camden Avenue, and Lake Cunningham Wetland Restoration. Public Safety. The major focus of the public safety is delivering projects funded by Measure T bond measure, with roughly $100 million allocated to various projects. Three projects to highlight includes the Fire Station 32, which is currently in construction. Fire Station 36 in CD7 is on Tours Road, is going to start design here pretty soon. Relocation of Police Training Center on Enzo Drive, that will allow the full activation of South San Jose Police Substation. And the relocation of PD Support Hangar, which is in construction and should be completed by end of this year, well, late summer this year. Airport. The San Jose Municipal International Airport, SJC, is currently certified by the FAA as a medium hub domestic airport with some international services. The airport master plan provides a framework for phased project approach, delivery approach. The CIP continues to focus on projects to improve efficiency, maximize safety, and increase passenger services. Some priority projects include short-term parking garage, garage sprinkler replacement, and the car rental car facility accessibility upgrade. Next slide. Parking. The parking CIP maintains and improves existing parking facilities, upgrades, replaces both on-street and off-street parking equipment, and develops new parking facilities. Staff manages eight garages, six surface, surface lots. There are about 7,000 parking spaces and 2,500 meter parking spaces in downtown, Japantown Civic Center, and the Adon area. The CIP includes garage facade improvement. Upcoming project coming up, you'll see lighting improvement to the St. Pedro Garage, the garage elevator upgrades, and some of the projects listed here. Next slide, please. Traffic CIP. The traffic CIP implements and manages multimodal transportation system that is safe, efficient, environmentally sensitive, and maintaining the best condition possible. Includes investment targets toward providing safe streets for all modes of travel and balanced transportation in support of ongoing initiatives, such as Better Bike Plan, Vision Zero, and General Plan 2040. Some of the projects in the CIP include McKee Road and Telly Road Corridor projects, local multimodals such as Better Bike Way, San Fernando Street, and Astoria and Keys, and regional projects such as 280 Winchester Boulevard, and Route 101 and Mayberry Project Development. Communications. The communication CIP fund improvements related to communications facilities that provide reliable and necessary safety-related communication equipment to city employees. The proposed CIP LK is ongoing funding to help replace radios that will be, that will reach their end life. And there are approximately 3,600 radios for fire employees. Municipal improvements. The municipal improvement CIP improvement includes maintenance of city facilities and the operating systems. The goal of this program is to develop and maintain functional city facilities and meet the service needs of both internal and external customers. The CIP project includes, the free to name is 911 Dispatch Center, backup battery replacement, convention center fire alarm panel, and convention center air handling replacements projects. Service yards. The objective of the service yards, there are four of them, the city owns, is to maintain and improve the existing condition of service yards by implementing projects that reduce safety hazards, provide necessary equipment and materials for operators. Some of the major projects include construction of a new fuel island, provide capacity for city, this will provide the capacity of city vehicles, maintain the central service yard, and also includes roof replacement and painting. Okay, next slide. This concludes my presentation. So here's a photo of a, the River Oaks Regional Stormwater Facility that was recently opened this year. This is one of the largest one in the West Coast area. With that, we will open to questions.
Thank you very much.
A question for you on that chart, where you had different grants coming from different levels of government, federal and state. I was curious, on the state, are any of those pass-through grants that actually the money comes from the federal?
In all cases where we have pass-through grants from federal, we do consider them federal grants. So we are careful to separate pass-through from other state sources. So everything that is pass-through from the state or regional agencies is shown under the federal agencies category.
Got it. And then on the five-year CIP, do you ever plan more than five years?
In some cases, we have individual projects that, that have project costs and plans beyond the five years. So in those cases, sometimes we will allocate or plan for estimated project costs beyond the five-year CIP. But in terms of balancing our capital funds, we typically do that for, for the five-year period.
Got it. And then back to the federal. I noticed in the report, when I did a search, it came up 102 times, right? So there's clearly an emphasis that the city and other cities receive federal funds. And, but I didn't see anywhere where it said, if the federal government reduces that amount 25%, what's the impact? Meaning, what project gets canceled? What can, what, how much would that cost the general fund if the city council decided to continue to fund it from general fund dollars? The salaries of the individuals that work on that project, where would they go? Do they get another position somewhere else in the city that's available? And, and so that's the question I have. And, you know, whether it's 25%, 50% reduction, 75%, 100%. All that uncertainty is here through January 2029. And so, that's, I don't see that reflected anywhere in the budget. Is that reflected somewhere else?
Thank you for the question. So as we prepared this budget, it was based on the best available information at the time. And of course, as you can imagine, that information is, is changing on a daily basis. So we are actively monitoring each of the federal awards that goes into both the capital and operating budget. And so we are planning to likely bring to, to council through the adoption process, likely through a manager's budget addendum, some additional analysis on the likelihood of receiving these awards in the '25, '26 proposed budget. Because as you can imagine too, with each of these grants, it, the likelihood of, the, the risk for that individual grant varies by the agency, whether it's entitlement, or we have a grant award already in place, or we are anticipating future grant awards. So we are actively monitoring that, and there will be more information forthcoming regarding that for the proposed budget.
Got it. Thank you very much. And I think as, as known by the new word impoundment, everyone understands, even though it's committed, it doesn't mean you're getting it. And a cabinet secretary can sit on those funds indefinitely. So I think, you know, having the city council understand, these are the scenarios, we modeled them out for you, and these are the impacts, because we are talking about employees that won't be funded, their position won't be funded.
The question about the delta generally...
Yes, yes, I was, thank you, Vice Chair. I was able to pull a table, I don't know if I can share it here, but it is on page 14 of the published proposed biennial capital budget and CIP. We have a table of the 2026 to 2023, excuse me, 23 proposed CIP We have a table of the 2026 to 2023, excuse me, 23 proposed CIP compared to the 25 to 29 adopted CIP by city service area. So last year's adopted CIP was just under $4 billion, and we're now at $3.4 billion. And I just want to clarify that we do anticipate that this year's adopted CIP to increase once we carry forward unspent appropriations, though we do expect it to be a bit lower than last year's adopted CIP.
Yeah, that's not what I was looking for. Actually, what I was trying to understand is the pattern over time.
I see.
That's what I'm trying to understand, you know, how good are we at doing this and what we might have learned from our pattern over time about the proposed and the actual adopted?
I see. So the delta between proposed and adopted over time.
Correct, correct.
Understood. I'm not sure we have that available, but yeah, that's an excellent question, and we can look into providing that offline.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. First of all, I wanted to say thank you to all the city staff that are here. I know you're all very busy. Appreciate you staying after your normal workday to talk to us. And I just also like to compliment the folks who prepared the CIP documents. Very well-written, it's easy to read, lots of good graphics, and I appreciate that. And also, thank you to John for getting us the document earlier this year, because that was really, really helpful. I have a couple of financing-type questions. One is, so I understand that the sanitary sewer and the storm sewer are separate systems. You indicated that the sanitary sewer is going to get a 4% increase this year, but then there was some language about the storm sewer system that you weren't able to increase the rate, I guess. And so my question is, why are the two of them different? Why could the storm sewer program not also increase the rates?
Good evening. Jeff Provenzano, Director, Environmental Services Department. It's a great question. It's on the storm sewer funding, if I understand correctly, versus the sanitary. There's certain legal considerations on the storm side where we typically are not increasing that year-over-year, but we are working on a new stormwater assessment, fee assessment that we're hoping to have in place in the next year and a half or so that will lead to a new fee for the stormwater system.
Okay, great. Thank you. And then another financing question, I noticed under the fire apparatus replacement that that could not use funds from Measure T. Could someone explain why that is the case? And I'm not sure if that's a fire department question or a finance question, but...
Stations, not apparatus.
Yeah, this would be fire apparatus replacement.
Understood, yeah. The Measure T funds were designated earmarked for fire facility remediation and also prioritizing the build-out of the recommended fire stations.
Okay, so it's basically the language of the measured restricted to facilities.
That's correct.
Okay.
And disaster preparedness, correct.
Okay, great. Thanks.
Yep.
Could you talk a little bit about what's going to be involved in the 911 center upgrade? And also, my eyes bulged out when I saw an emergency generator that costs $5 million, but I'm sure it's, I'm sure it's reasonable, but if you could talk a little bit about the 911 center upgrades and what, how that'll help provide better service and a better atmosphere for the staff there.
Sure. Sal Kumar, Department of Public Works. Thanks. Good question. So what entails is basically on the fourth floor of the existing building will require basically taking out the entire floor out and then improving the, especially renovation project that will include floor replacement, office buildings, new cable, new technology, and also the service that provides to the system itself.
Is it, are the upgrades being designed with a possible increase in staffing in future years?
I'm sorry, I don't have the answer for that, but my understanding is that we are upgrading it to fully staff this site.
Okay. Go ahead, Chief.
Hey, how's it going? Deputy Fire Chief Patrick Chung. That is correct. We are building out additional workstations right now. Given the initial build-out, as Deputy Director Kumar was mentioning, we were trying to handle a call volume that was significantly lower than what we're dealing with now and planning for the future. So the new workstations will be taking over the legacy OEM. If you recall, Office of Emergency Management was located on the exterior wings of that building. Fire communications will now be taking over all those exterior office spaces for additional workspace.
Okay, great.
Yep.
Thank you. Final question. Commissioner Cantrell and I were talking about the deferred maintenance over a billion dollars. That's, you know, mind-boggling, but if you could just talk about the strategy that the city has to try and address that going forward.
That's the Parks Department.
Good evening. I'm Martin Nguyen, Deputy Director for Public Works. And I will try to explain how deferred maintenance get to our plate, specifically on the capital side of the public works side, and how we are dealing with it. So we are running, or we're managing a few programs in the city, including sanitary sewer program, storm sewer program, and we do have a large deficit on capital improvements and also on the deferred maintenance. We are trying to work with our partner departments as well as, you know, trying to get more grants from, you know, Caltrans or from federal to support our program. But at the same time, for example, for sanitary sewer, we try to increase rate to keep up with what we need to invest into our system. On storm sewer system, like Jeff mentioned earlier, we are trying to work on another special tax or special fee in the future so that it can be support. So we do try to look for different ways to support our infrastructure, and it really depends on different system, and each department will have to come up with different way to deal with it. I hope that kind of ends...
Yeah, no, that's helpful. Is there someone here from PRNS that could talk about the deferred parks maintenance?
Hello. Raymond Costantino, Deputy Director over Capital Projects. So in parks, we have a deferred maintenance of about $500 million. And so there as well, we're looking at streamlining projects, value engineering, prioritizing those deferred maintenance projects that are most needed, right? And then also looking at other new revenue sources. And so that's how we're trying to address it. Obviously, half a billion dollars' worth of parks deferred maintenance is a lot, and so it will just take a while for us to figure out how to tackle that and also to strategize new ways of handling that level of deferred maintenance.
Okay. And then I guess, just a thank you, a question for the city manager's office. I know there was some language in there about a bond or a parcel tax. Just wonder what's the status of the research into that?
To clarify your question, are you referring to a future bond or parcel tax?
Yes, future, yes.
Oh, I'm not sure if we have any information about future bonds or parcel tax. I think our reference to the bond was just the existing Measure T general obligation bond issued in 2018. So those bond funds will be exhausted in this five-year CIP, which is part of why we're seeing the funding level go down. So there could be additional bonds contemplated in the future, but nothing has been proposed on that yet.
Okay. And then would it be possible, not tonight, but to get us a sort of a comparison with similar-sized cities of what our infrastructure shortfall is compared with other cities of similar size?
I think that's something that we could research and provide.
Okay, great.
Yes.
Thank you. That's all for me. Thanks a lot.
Can I, the PRS person, if you wouldn't mind stepping forward again? I'm curious a couple of things. So how long has it taken us to get to this half a billion dollars of deferred maintenance?
I wouldn't be able to tell you that. I've been here two years, so I'm not sure. But since I've been here, at least the past two years, the number has been about 500 million in deferred maintenance.
Okay. So is there going to be a plan to address it in any way at all? It just doesn't sound like any progress is being made.
Right. So speaking of a parcel tax or a bond, so in the Parks Department or PRNS, we are exploring that idea. And part of our strategy is to work with the community, to kind of educate the community about our deferred maintenance and, you know, the extent of our deferred maintenance, which is pretty hefty at half a billion dollars. And so that education, community education effort will be kind of unfolded this summer. We are working with a consultant to see how we can approach that effort and see if we can basically, you know, change the community's perspective around understanding that we do have a large deferred maintenance backlog for existing infrastructure in particular, not new projects, but existing infrastructure, and see if we can gain their support in pursuing either a ballot measure or a bond.
Excellent. That's the answer I wanted to hear. I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
And then I have one question about construction conveyance tax going up. I haven't seen many cranes lately, I'm just wondering where it's coming from.
That's correct. We are anticipating that revenue source to go up by about, I think, $27 million over our last estimate. And that's really because, I think it was, off the top of my head, I want to say, it was in the last two, three years, we saw that tax drops precipitously, and it really is quite volatile. It is tied much more to the conveyance than to the construction piece. The construction side represents maybe only about 1% of those tax receipts, whereas the conveyance of private property is the rest, almost 99%. And so what we saw was a sharp decrease in the conveyance of private properties, I want to say in 2023, 24, yeah, 2022, 23, thank you Claudia. And so it's been starting to recover in those last few years. So we are still watching it, we're projecting those revenues cautiously, but it does seem to be starting to return to the levels that we saw five-plus years ago.
Okay, great.
Thank you. Any other questions from members of the commission?
Does this require a motion?
It does, yes. The staff recommendation today is to recommend to the city council the adoption of the 2025 to 2027 proposed by annual capital budget and 2026 to 2030 capital improvement program, and transmit a report to the city council, providing comments, including a finding of consistency with the 2040 general plan.
I'd like to make a motion to do that with also that staff bring to the council the various scenarios of federal money being depleted at whatever percentages you want, but all the way down to zero. What's that impact on other capital budget programs? Because you might want to use capital dollars for something else. What's that impact if the council decides to use it on the general fund? And what's that impact on the people that are, their salaries are paid by the grant?
I'll second that.
All right. The motion on the table is to approve the staff recommendation with the addition of a report from staff to city council on all of the uncertainty around federal budgets and potential impacts to the city. We have a second from Vice Chair Cantrell. Yes?
I assume the addition is a request since we can't direct staff, right?
Yes, a request. Thank you.
Informational request. I'd like to say I was the only member of the public speaking in favor of the park bond when the city council considered it last year. There's not a single other person in favor.
Thank you. If there's no additional questions from the commission, we will move to a vote. Vice Chair Cantrell?
Yes.
Commissioner Barocchio?
Yes.
Commissioner Bendall is absent, Commissioner Bickford is absent, Commissioner Lardino?
Yes.
Commissioner Oliverio?
Yes.
Commissioner Rosario is absent, Commissioner Young?
Yes.
Myself, yes. That's six yes, zero no, so the motion passes. That brings us to the end of our agenda for this study session. Want to again extend my appreciation to staff. Budget season, obviously, one of the most important times of the year at City Hall, but also one of the most hectic for staff. So thank you to everyone who put this presentation together and everyone who has worked on the budget these past several months. With that, we will adjourn the study session at 5:51 PM, and we will reconvene in the council chambers at 6:30. Thank you.